Good morning, welcome. This time I call to order Muskogee Creek National Council Regular Session, March 27th, 2021. Time is 10:17. At this time, I'd like to ask Representative Charles McHenry to lead us in the song and then following the song, Representative Lowe do the invocation, please. Let us pray. Lord, we come to you today thanking you for letting us all experience another great day together, Lord. Please be with all our tribal leaders, our employees, our staff. Just be with them and help us to do the best things we can for the great Muskogee Nation, Lord. Please be with all the citizens that have dealt with this pandemic at a mourning of the loss. Please be with all of our women and men serving our great country, Lord. Please help us to conduct great business today. Be with us as we do this business and travel home. All these things I ask in your great name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Representative Lowe. Thank you, Representative McHenry.
Roll call, National Council Secretary, Kristi Jackson.
Speaker Randall Hicks.
Present.
Mary Crawford.
Present.
Joyce Steer.
Present.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Here.
Robert Huff.
Present.
James Jennings. Adam Jones.
Here.
William Lowe.
Here.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry.
Here.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Present.
Daryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Travis Scott.
Here.
Lucian Tiger III.
Present.
Speaker, you have sixteen present, zero absent.
Sixteen present, zero absent constitutes a quorum. All business conducted will be official. Approval of minutes. Extraordinary session, February 5th, 2021. Planning session, February 23rd, 2021. Extraordinary session, February 25th, 2021. Pre-agenda, regular session, February 27th, 2021. Entertained a motion from council.
Speaker, make a motion. We approve all the minutes with any changes necessary, sir.
Motion made by Representative Lowe to approve the minutes with any corrections as needed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
William Lowe.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger III.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings. Adam Jones.
Yes.
Speaker, you have sixteen in favor, zero absent, or zero none.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion passes. Next item is order of business. TR-21035. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute a certain agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation, Department of Health, and Dad Innovations LLC on behalf of the Muskogee Creek Nation, Department of Health, sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt TR-21035. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Any discussion?
It's just a standard, it's a standard agreement.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute a certain agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation, Department of Health, and AfterX Inc. on behalf of the Muskogee Creek Nation, Department of Health, sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt TR-21036. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Hola Osborne. Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute a certain agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation, Department of Health, and Wolters Clewer Health, Inc. on behalf of the Muskogee Creek Nation, Department of Health, sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt TR-21037. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Hola Osborne. Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion is adopted. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation confirming the nomination of Miranda Carmen to serve as Secretary of Community and Human Services of the Muskogee Creek Nation, sponsors William Lowe.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Lowe made a motion to adopt TR-21038. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Huff. Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
William Lowe.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
No.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger III.
No.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
No.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
No.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
No.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
Speaker, you have ten in favor, five against.
Ten in favor, five against, that motion is adopted. Congratulations. TR-21039. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation confirming the nomination of Sarah Price to serve as the Secretary of Education, Employment, and Training of the Muskogee Creek Nation, sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt TR-21039. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Scott. Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Speaker.
Representative Hola Osborne had a question.
Yes.
Um, Speaker, may I ask a couple of questions that I wasn't able to ask?
Can you, is your mic phone on? Can you speak into it?
May I, may I ask Miss Price a couple of questions I wasn't able to ask earlier?
Sure, that's fine.
Miss Price. Um, what are your thoughts, or do you have any plans on sending any of our language staff to the schools to teach the language?
At the moment, those are not any immediate plans. I would have to check with the staff. It's my understanding that in previous years, there were issues to be worked out with the schools when some of those teachers themselves went into the school districts and then the schools were asking other, um, job duties and responsibilities of those teachers. And so I think that would have to be worked out as to whether or not that's possible. I know that we do have our own certification process, so our, our teachers are certified on a public level to be teachers out in the school districts, but I think that would be deemed by the needs of that, that program.
Okay. The second question I have is, um, in regards to the foundation program, um, how will you help that program grow, mature, and move towards excellence?
Great question. I apologize. Let me, I had some notes actually from the scholarship support that, so immediately it's about, again, how we're fielding those calls and how we're tracking, um, those calls. For scholarships specifically, um, they are a 78/71A, not a 501(c)(3), so I think that's been an issue in the past in terms of getting some of those charitable donations, um, from in other entities. They're wondering, okay, they're not a 501(c)(3), is this even tax deductible? It is in fact tax deductible. They're considered this other, um, 78/71A because it is a tribal entity and we have tribal sovereignty over those things. Again, it's about, you know, gathering more donors and getting more information out there to individuals and companies as well, so we can be able to create more flow there. Currently, they're, they are updating their bylaws and policies. They're creating a procedures pamphlet themselves. They're also revamping a website and working on it. You know, to date, I have had no authority over any of these, um, these programs within the department. I have had my own opinions about moving them forward, but because I wasn't in a situation to support them or to affect any of their work, um, I didn't have any influence over what was going on. But I certainly know there are some easy fixes in terms of, of, you know, making sure some of those processes are formalized. They, I, I will just quickly report that in, they had forty scholarships awarded in the fall of last year totaling $36,500. And in the spring, they've currently awarded twenty-seven scholarships totaling $26,500. There's been turnover in the program. That's on my radar now. And again, you know, if and when I have that authority, I certainly want to influence those, uh, outcomes and review and update that donor pool of corporations and things. Also looking at organized events, um, to raise money as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions for Miss Price? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Miss Price.
Hello.
Representatives, as you would, make sure you speak into your mic or pull it up to you, that way we can hear. Okay, no other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
No.
Charles McHenry.
No.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
No.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger III.
No.
Mary Crawford.
No.
Joyce Steer.
No.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
No.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
No.
Adam Jones.
No.
William Lowe.
No.
Speaker, you have five in favor, ten against.
Five in favor, ten against, that motion fails. TR-21042. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute an amendment for participation in settlement litigation involving opioid consultants. Sponsors Travis Scott. Make a motion to adopt. Representative Scott made a motion to adopt TR-21042. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative McHenry. Discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing Gaming Operations Authority Board, GOAB, to execute the AIA document, A101-2017, standard form of agreement between owner and contractor with Thompson Construction, Inc., sponsors Patrick Freeman Jr. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Representative Freeman made a motion to adopt TR-21046. Seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion? Discussion?
Yes, Speaker.
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, I'd like to amend the, uh, AIA document. Where it's denoted on, uh, page, uh... Somewhere in this document, it denotes where the performance bond is, uh, has been applied, but it has, in this case, we, this has not. I'd like to amend this to add performance bond, which is a unknown cost yet, but, uh, we'd, we'd just like to amend it for the contract.
Second.
I'm gonna find it here in just a second.
Ms. Freeman, what are, what are you wanting to amend?
I would just say, I want to amend this contract document to, uh, add the performance bond.
That is in the agreement.
Okay. It is on page three of the AIA document.
Speaker.
Representative Tiger.
Thank you, Speaker. Representative Freeman.
Yes.
Uh, the contract is not a part of the legislation, so I don't think that's something that we can amend.
Okay.
At this time. Thank you, Representative Freeman. Thank you, Speaker.
I would.
Thank you, Representative Tiger.
I withdraw the amendment.
Speaker.
Representative Jones.
Um, Attorney General Wiley. You know, is it standard that we use performance bonds on most contracts now on builds? We used to do that on every contract, have a performance bond, and it's not checked in their AI contract this time. Can we add that?
We, we normally do, um, require performance bond. It's not in this contract. As far as procedurally, I, I think Zeke would probably know the answer to that better than I would, whether you could add it now, but it's something I, I definitely would advise, like Mr. Freeman's recommending here.
Sir. Thank you.
Speaker, I got a comment.
Yeah, you know. If there's something in, in the contract we don't agree to, we don't have to put this station today. We can postpone it the next month or whatever. We add to our next week or something.
Okay.
Case.
Representative Lowe.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we may recommend this to the GOAB in their board meeting, but I agree with Representative Huff. Thank you, Speaker. Speaker.
Representative Tiger.
Mr. Ray on the line.
That's what I was getting ready to ask. Mr. Ray, are you online?
Can you hear me? Speaker Hicks?
Yeah.
But yes, this is a, this is a guaranteed price contract, uh, guaranteed stipulated price. I just confirmed there is a performance bond in the guaranteed price. We just need to add the language to that contract that shows that it is part of the guaranteed price, but it was part of the bid package, and it is included in Thompson's cost.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Speaker.
Mr. Jennings.
Mr. Ray, James Jennings. So, will that be done by GOAB's attorney?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Before I sign the con, before I sign the contract, Mr. Jennings, we will have Ms. Tiger make those changes, sir.
Thank you.
Speaker.
Representative Tiger.
Thank you, Speaker. Chief Phil? We postponed this, can we get it added to the extraordinary session agenda? Chairman Ray?
Yes, sir.
We postponed this today, can we get it corrected and on the extraordinary session agenda?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Tiger. Any other discussion? So the motion on the floor is to adopt.
Speaker. Make a motion to postpone, uh... Would it be indefinitely, or do we want to postpone the extraordinary session? What would be? Just postpone indefinitely? Postpone to the extraordinary session? Make a motion to postpone it to the extraordinary session meeting Tuesday. Uh, I believe that's March 30th, is that correct?
Okay, motion has been made by Representative Tiger to postpone until extraordinary session Tuesday. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Scott. Discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, please. I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Lucian Tiger III.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Lowe.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero, one, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion passes to postpone until next Tuesday for extraordinary session. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing an appropriation for the Muskogee Creek Nation Community Research and Development Department to provide necessary maintenance and repairs to the nation's chartered community buildings, sponsors James Jennings.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt, NCA-21014. Do I have a second? Seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Lowe.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger III.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services to the Muskogee Creek Nation Elderly Nutrition Program, sponsors James Jennings.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt, NCA-21015. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Lowe. Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Lowe.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger III.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA-21016. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a supplemental to post education and scholarship revolving fund, sponsors James Jennings.
Speaker, I make, I make a motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt, NCA-21016. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Lowe. Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Lowe.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger III.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing an appropriation for the Muskogee Creek Nation Tribal Driveaways Department for the purchase of equipment, sponsors James Jennings.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt, NCA-21017. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Lowe.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger III.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Speaker, fifteen in favor, zero against?
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one zero-one eight, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation establishing the Recreation Revolving Fund for the expenditure of all departmental income sponsors Travis Scott.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Scott made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one zero-one eight, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Representative Huff, discussion. Discussion.
Speaker.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask the question of, how much revenue did we have in these accounts from previous years?
Mr. Dornell, for Tara.
Good morning, National Council, this would be creating a revolving fund, so we don't, there's not any revenue in the account currently.
Yes, my question is, I know that any revenue that was created was put back in the budgets. Do we know how much that would have done in previous years?
So in 2020, there was less than $10,000 that was reverted back to the general fund.
Last year, I know that we didn't have the festival or anything like that, so, and then we held tournaments in nineteen, do we know what that is?
I do not.
Okay.
I'm not familiar, I apologize.
Okay, that's fine, I was just trying to get an estimate on what we had in that revenue account.
I would say because the Omniplex is more active, renting the softball fields or the dome kind of depends on the size of the event and who the host is. So let's say the softball fields are full, four months out of the year, you're looking at just over $12,000 just in rental revenue. And then if you look at the dome, depending on the number of events and whether or not we're collecting concession or gate, that could average between $25,000 and $30,000 if they're really busy. I don't know that we've reached that maximum capacity yet, but that's the goal for the current manager.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Speaker, I have a question.
Representative Low.
Yes, Ms. Tara, I know Fountainhead and Recreation, if this passes, have separate revolving accounts. Is Fountainhead underneath Recreation in the org chart or are they their own independent?
So during the previous budget cycle, the two departments were separated, so they both now directly report to the Secretary of the Nation in Commerce and they have their own fund and program codes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Low. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucy and Tiger III.
No.
Mary Crawford.
No.
Joyce Steer.
No.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
No.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Speaker, you have eleven in favor, four against?
Eleven in favor, four against, that motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one zero-two-zero, a law of Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCN CA Title fourteen entitled Crimes and Punishments Regarding Criminal Complaint and Arrest Warrant or summons to appear. Sponsors Adam Jones III. Thank you, Speaker, motion to adopt. Representative Jones made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one zero-two-zero, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Representative Proctor, discussion. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucy and Tiger III.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Speaker, you got fifteen in favor, zero against?
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one zero-two-three, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of the Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policy Services, COPS, twenty twenty Law Enforcement, Mental Health and Wellness Act, LEMHWA Program Grant for the Benefit of the Light Horse Police Department sponsors Travis Scott.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Scott made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one zero-two-three.
Second.
Second by Representative Hicks, discussion. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucy and Tiger III.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Speaker, you got fifteen in favor, zero against?
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one zero-two-four, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCN CA Title forty-eight, Chapter two, subsection two dash one oh two entitled Tribal Worker's Benefit Advisory Council Membership sponsors Travis Scott.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Scott made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one zero-two-four, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Representative Huff, discussion. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucy and Tiger III.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Speaker, you got fifteen in favor, zero against?
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one zero-two-five, a law of Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the Internal Revenue Service for the benefit of the Office of the Secretary of the Nation in Commerce sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one zero-two-five, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconding by Representative Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucy and Tiger III.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Speaker, you got fifteen in favor, zero against?
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one zero-two-six, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Office of Childcare sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one zero-two-six, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconding by Representative Yehola Osborne, discussion. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucy and Tiger III.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Speaker, you got fifteen in favor, zero against?
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. That concludes the order of business, the next item on the agenda is other business, is there any other business?
Speaker.
Representative Tiger.
Thank you, Speaker. There was a policy that was brought to our attention during one of the meetings this week, could you please read that so we can all listen to the policy and I have a few questions for Chief Hill once you've read it, thank you.
Do you have the policy, sir?
Sir.
Do you have it?
Yes, sir.
Representative Tiger, I'll have a second, Speaker, read then.
Thank you. This policy is, excuse me, let me go to the. To all employees from the Policy and Procedures Committee dated March eighteen, two thousand twenty-one, regarding employee policy announcement legislative branch request for information and correspondence. This policy was created to streamline information throughout the Muskogee Creek Nation to be more efficient and improve organizational performance when it comes to request for information and or correspondence from legislative branch of government. Please read the policy in its full entirety and if you have any questions or need more information, please feel free to contact the Human Resources Office, say nine one eight seven three two seven eight two seven. It's signed by Josh, you're on the sec. The purpose, the purpose of this request of information and correspondence policy is to provide information and establish guidelines between the legislative and executive branches. This will further provide a communication policy that protects the separation of powers between the branches of government and prevents systematic checks and balances. All requests for information, correspondence from Muskogee Creek Nation legislative branch to the executive branch employees shall follow these guidelines. Request of information and correspondence from the legislative branch, number one, all requests by the legislative branch for information correspondence held by the executive branch shall be submitted through the Speaker of the National Council to the Office's Principal Chief. The Office of the Principal Chief will respond to each request within ten business days. Number two, executive branch employees are instructed to immediately notify their manager if any member of the National Council or staff of the legislative branch request from the employee any information or correspondence. In the event a member of the National Council or staff of the legislative branch directly interferes with an executive branch employee in the performance of his or her duties, the employees shall report the incident to their manager. No information or correspondence shall be submitted by an executive branch employee to the legislative branch except in accordance with this policy. Number three, all attendance requests of the executive branch administration for National Council meetings shall be submitted through the Speaker of the National Council. Number four, all information and correspondence submitted by the executive branch employees to the National Council shall be submitted through the Office to the Principal Chief, to the Speaker of the National Council, that's it.
Thank you, Second Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker, thank you, Second Speaker, Chief Hill. Thank you, Chief Hill. What transpired to implement a policy such as this?
Well, as per the policy, if you have any questions at all, I will refer that soon to the Speaker and if you refer them to me, I'll answer all questions pertaining to that policy.
Chief Hill. But my question was, what took place for you to put a policy like that in place? What, has someone from the legislative branch done something wrong, overstepped boundaries, could you please elaborate on that?
Again, if there's any questions pertaining to this policy, I request that all questions come to you, Speaker, and you forward them to me and I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Chief Hill, as Chairman of H E W Committee, how are we to, as council representatives, to sponsor legislation that comes from Office of the Principal Chief if we cannot communicate with employees, cabinet members, deputy directors, managers of departments?
Well, when it comes to legislation, there's no problem with that, but I'll go ahead and ask you a question, Representative Tiger.
Thank you.
You know, the law that y'all removed a couple of months ago, not the law, but rules and procedures, there's employees that feel that they're being threatened, pressured to answer questions when it's affecting their daily duties now. Now, when it comes to the cabinet members or managers pertaining to legislation, I have no problem at all. But when there's certain information that's want to be provided, they just feel like they have to hurry up and do it, and they're feeling pressured. It's no different when the former Chief Tiger was in, I found copies of memos sent to the Speaker as well as Chief Ellis and Chief Floyd. You know, in your previous position as Speaker, there's also memo in there from Chief Floyd stating the same thing. If there's information that's requested from each department, please follow the procedure, go to the chairperson, the chairperson goes to the Speaker and the Speaker sends it to the Chief. But once that was removed, there's some employees feel like if they get caused, what do they do? So in order to protect the employees of the nation, I just implemented that, the same ones y'all had in rules and procedures.
Do you feel that benefits the nation, does that benefit the citizens, because the concern that I have is you have a ten day gap in there. So on a weekend, we as representatives get a phone call from a citizen, it's emergency, we have to send an email to Speaker Hicks, he may or may not be busy, may not look at his email, then he has to reach out to you, then you have to reach out to the appropriate department, then it comes back through the chain of command again, how is that beneficial to our citizens?
It's what situation is, I know Representative Jennings called me before on a weekend, there are some that's called me if it does to a burial or anything like that, that's mostly the calls that we get. If it's burial assistance, I'll call the appropriate department, call Aaron or the acting, at that time the acting cabinet member, it's usually addressed that day. If not, you know, we'll keep on doing what we need to unless it can wait that following Monday.
Thank you, Chief. I have another question on another subject, real quick, on another topic. The monthly report from the Ambassador, in his report, he speaks about meeting with you and Second Chief Beaver with Oklahoma Tax Commission on March second. You, would you mind telling me who all was in that meeting, was it just you, Second Chief Beaver, and Ambassador Shoddy?
Yes, as well as Attorney Joe Williams, it was just a meeting with them, just intro, and we did ask them about the questions on the tax, income tax. We went back and forth, but we did report that out at one of the meetings. So it may have been a meeting you weren't present, I don't know, but we did report that out.
Okay, next question is, why was the Attorney General's Office not involved in this meeting with the Tax Commission?
At that part in time, he wasn't available.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Tiger. I have a question.
Chief, I have a question. Chief, it relates to NCA twenty-one oh-two-two-two, it's a consulting and PR lobbyist legislation. And what it was, was I sent a letter to Speaker and yourself requesting that information for attorneys and a breakdown for, can we get that information?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, Chief.
Speaker.
Representative Hicks.
Chief, going back to this policy and procedure, if an employee happens to talk to one of us or we happen to talk to them and they do not notify their manager, what kind of yes? Consequences are there for that? Are there any consequences? If we speak to an employee or an employee speaks to us and they do not notify their manager at all, is there any sort of consequences or repercussions to that?
Depends on what the question is, I mean, it's, if it's pertaining to, because there's some information that someone may ask to employees, maybe confidential information, maybe pertaining to the Child Welfare Act or persons in salaries or anything like that, HR department, but if you look in the handbook, the policy and procedures on general for employees, that they're not supposed to provide those type of information.
So you're telling me that if we got any questions for an employee, say it's about something with social services, not asking for any type of personal information on the person or anything else, we can do that?
Well, Representative Hicks, if it's pertaining to citizens' application, I prefer it come to me. Because as I mentioned before, if I don't know what's broken, I don't know what to fix. I know Representative Randolph, Representative Crawford, Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne has asked questions and I feel that I've turned them around in timely manner. I don't want to come up to a situation where I'm at general session and the issue happened in higher ed, the following week before, I lost five days. I know that happened recently, that it put Dr. Monty Randall, when he was currently the Secretary of Education, question was asked to him, we lost five days. If the protocol, the procedure was followed, go through the Speaker, we probably could answer that in a couple of days and have it corrected. But again, if it's, if I'm having an issue in a certain department, is it employee that needs a proper training, what is it? If it's the same issue time and time again, that needs to be fixed and corrected. But if I don't know what the issue is, I don't know how to correct it and it doesn't give, doesn't give the cabinet members time to correct it itself.
Well, I don't have no more really any questions, just kind of a comment. You know, by the way, I read this, to me, it now hinders council from speaking with programs and us working together to get things done quicker. And not necessarily to have personal information on people, but it's just questions like, hey, what do they need for this application? Oh, hey, I got a person that their water heater broke down, what can I do to help them? You know, now, I don't feel that we can even visit with anybody without, you know, this coming back. And if it is found out that we speak to an employee, I think they feel and have fear that there are going to be repercussions to them.
Well, again, if there are situations like that and if citizens are not for sure what to put on the application, that's a process that the cabinet members in that department needs to go correct or update, you know, provide more information to the citizens. But if I'm not aware of it, how can we fix it?
Well, it's kind of like a phone call I got this past weekend, or this past week, a guy has tried to call one of the programs about the COVID checks that went out and apparently he can't reach nobody. He's tried over and over and over again to reach someone, no one wants to. He's tried over and over and over again to reach someone, no one wants to answer their phones. So, since I've started in this, you know, on this council, you know, my response would be, I'd walk in there and visit with the employees to find out about stuff, because I don't have time to wait.
Well, again, once you come to the employees in there, they're going to feel pressured themselves when they have a council member come, but as I mentioned, y'all had several called about the COVID, the income and hardship, and those were, I feel, was turned around in time of matter. If not, they'll call our office and Ms. Anita Dana will take the call, and we'll just move it forward.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Hicks.
Speaker, I have a question, sir.
Representative Low?
Hello, Chief. This policy, you know, one thing that I would ask and get guidance moving forward, you know, sometimes as council representatives, we have employees that feel that they're being treated unfairly by a manager that you may have appointed, let's say that's the case, not to play scenarios here, how would you guide us moving forward if we had someone that wanted to exercise their employee rights, that felt they couldn't tell their manager in the fear of being terminated, and feel they can't tell you because you're going to support that manager that you appointed?
Again, we have policy and procedures in place. If that's the case, really need to go to HR. There's been situations where me and Second Chief as well has brought to our attention, we told them to follow the protocol that's in place. We have policy and procedures in place through HR. You know, if they need to follow grievance, that's what they need to do.
Yep. I have actually been told that sometimes HR doesn't keep things confidential, so as a worst-case scenario, do they come to the council to, for us to contact you about it and we can have a discussion on that? Would you recommend that or would you be against that, sir?
I'd be more, I would recommend that coming. That's one of the things when the new HR manager strictly told him before, that the employees do not feel that they can trust HR department.
Yes, sir.
And I told him that some things that was brought in previous when I was on the council for twelve years, the employees, it was hard to trust the HR department.
Yes, sir.
That's one of the things I told him, he really needs to stricken that, everything is held confidential. HR department is right there in the middle. They do what's best for employee and do what's best for the nation.
Thank you, Chief.
So, I instructed him to do that.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Madoff, Speaker. Representative Jones?
Chief, you feel like the Employee Protection Act trumps the policy, or the policy kind of butts edge with the Employee Protection Act?
I'm going to review that in Policy Protection Commission Committee. It's, I think the last time they had a meeting was last year, so that's one of the areas that we're going to strengthen. And that policy, yes, we're going to have to make sure it coincides, because it hasn't been, I feel that committee probably hasn't had the opportunity to do what they're supposed to do, because it's hard to follow grievance when you're already fired.
Right. Well, the thing is, what it looks like to us, Chief, is that if something happens to an employee or something at their management level, they can't really go to anybody else like the council or anything, so that fear that they may lose their job, so it looks like you may lose trust from the employee side too, as they're not being trusted. So, looking back in the past, we'd be unable to go to Chief Tiger administration, Chief Floyd's administration, and I've seen council members in the past go to different department heads and try to get budgets passed without going to the chief, you know, which was, you know, it's kind of directly against the chiefs in the past, so, you know, we're trying to, need to figure out a way to work this so we can help all the citizens. I don't think we're trying to, as a council, trying to come and go directly against you, we're just trying to help the citizens. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Speaker Proctor.
All right, thank you, Chief. Why was the council or legislative branch not involved with this when you was meeting with the Oklahoma Tax Commission? Is it, is it your opinion that we don't need to be involved, or is that something that...
He actually called, contacted my office, wanted to speak to me privately, but I told him there's, there's a couple, because I know with that Reservation Protection Commission that Joe was involved in, as well as John did, and they've been right there in the front, so they had questions to ask about, because the main thing was income. The thing that we had to discuss, and once we had that meeting, we did have a meeting with Attorney AG Department, Mr. Wiley, informed him what the discussion was. Is he wasn't available at that time?
Can we not be involved in any discussions like this?
Yeah, if you can't be. I mean, that's one of the things I need to get clear, because y'all basically informed Speaker while back that he shouldn't be coming to the council or to the chief's office. So, I need something clear to say, do you want Speaker to come over there, update him? I try to update him best I can, but that was y'all's decision not for him not to come over there, so I need a clear understanding, do y'all want Speaker to come over there? I've tried to include both y'all in some of the meetings, so do y'all want Speaker to come over there and I'll inform him. I didn't make that decision, the council did, for your former Speaker not to come over. I'd be more than happy to.
So, do you feel like the communication is not there? I mean...
I personally do. When Speaker quit coming over there, did. I think it's very important that Speaker and Second Speaker needs to be over there, but I need a clear understanding, do, does the council want the Speaker to come over there as well as you and Second Speaker?
I just feel like on this, what's been going on with the Oklahoma Test, we're not getting very much from the commission or for even your office also. I know there's a lot of information that we probably can't vote or anything like that, but at the same time, this council needs to know whether it's from our Speaker or someone. I just think it needs to happen, regardless of what we said. Thank you.
Again, I've had several meetings updating the council on the Muskogee, the Reservation Commission, so if you want to, I'll send a meeting notice to both y'all. Not a problem at all.
Chief, another question. As far as the council and as the nation as a whole, I would like to see Attorney General be involved in those meetings and not just your personal attorney. You know, your personal attorneys don't represent the council or the nation as a whole, they're your attorneys. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand. Roger does attend when he can. I mean, with this ruling, he is, he's...
Or somebody from Attorney General's office, don't leave them out.
If you want me to, I can include Zeke. That's totally up to y'all's call.
Well, I think even Zeke's our personal attorney for the council, we need somebody from the nation, so from the AG's office.
Yeah. Well, usually if Roger can, Kevin will.
Whoever AG assigns some.
Not a problem at all.
Thank you, Chief.
Speaker.
Representative Tiger?
Thank you. Chief, also on Ambassador Chodder, could we get a updated job description of what his duties actually are? Because there's been some conversation that he is in meetings that we don't feel basically that he should be in putting information into, he should be injecting himself into, so could you get us an updated job description of job duties of the ambassador, please?
Not a problem. Should be on that legislation though, but I'll look at it.
I didn't know if it had changed or not, because just, again, on the tax commission issue, he was engaged in that meeting obviously as well, and I don't know that that's something he should be engaged in.
Well, he is ambassador for DC, and he happened to be down here to get his shots, so whatever happens here, you know, him and our lobbyists in DC have to work it at their end too.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Tiger. Any other business?
Speaker, I have a question.
Representative Morse?
Right here. I know, I'm so short, you can't see me. I have a question. Would it be appropriate, if it happens on the weekend or the weekday, and we're not going to have time to send a message to the Speaker for him to get you the question, and for them to get back to him, for him to get back to me, for me to get back to the citizen? Because to me, I think my role as a council person is to advocate for our citizens. I mean, that, I mean, not to butt in or anything else, or to divulge confidential information, but I think my job is to advocate for our citizens. And so, would it be easier for us just to, for me to just tell the citizen to contact you directly, rather than me sending him and sending Speaker an email and Speaker sending you an email and you sending it back and him sending it to me, because it might be two days later and they need an immediate response, since we're not supposed to have any contact with the employees? But we could get the answer.
I've had citizens call me on the weekends, weekday. Usually when Speaker sends a request with him and Second Speaker on the email, I know Mary and Representative Randolph send me messages and Mr. McHenry, and I include them on the email. So, you know, but that's not a problem, you want to give my number?
Okay, okay.
And we're, there should be a line like who's on call, that's what I instructed cabinet members to do on the weekend. Now, I know, I realize some areas don't have internet service, so if they call, well, definitely, if it's emergency, I'll definitely call Speaker.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Marshall. Any other business?
Speaker, one more question, please.
Representative Hicks?
Just a question for kind of my knowledge. Your, the last four years of yourself being on council, did you have to deal with any sort of policy like this, where you weren't able to visit with the employees and you had to go through steps just to get an answer?
Yes, I did. Usually I approached Speaker, at that time it was Speaker Tiger, because did receive a memo, the same thing, stating to go by the policy, the rules and procedures of the National Council, to go through the chairperson, and chairperson go to the Speaker. But being a Second Speaker, I did usually inform Speaker Tiger or Chief Floyd at that time.
Thank you. Thanks, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Hicks. Any other business? Thank you, Chief. Down to announcements. Any announcements? Speaker.
Speaker, I'd like to make an announcement for Wild Onion Dinner Drive-Thru at Broken Arrow Engine United Methodist Church.
Go ahead, speaking through your mic, sir.
Announcement for Broken Arrow Engine United Methodist Church, Wild Onion Dinner Drive-Thru today, eleven to three. See y'all there.
Representative Scott?
Speaker for Springfield United Engine and Methodist Churches having theirs next Saturday. We will have some tables outside under Arbor for social distancing if you want to stay and eat, if the weather's nice.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Eleven to three. Thank you.
Speaker, just real quick, Chief Hill, if you could please tell the health employees, Sean Terry's group, that I get a lot of calls from our citizens and any non-Creek citizens that they're doing such a great job in these vaccines, very, very nice employees, and we're just getting a lot of good compliments out there, so please convey Madoff from us to them, because I know it's a lot of standing up, I've seen Joe Hicks out there helping too, so, you know, just tell them thank you, we appreciate them. Madoff, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Low. Representative Jones?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to tell everybody, way back when, I got sick roughly right after Christmas, was in the hospital for eleven days, and wanted to tell everybody as a whole, thank you for the prayers and everything, but also what I want to really point out is that I felt like our health system did an outstanding job, and without that healthcare and the employees' care, that, you know, it had been hard to make it. So, I want to give a big shout out to our health system, because I believe they're doing an excellent job taking care of our citizens, and I just want to thank them. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Jones. Any other announcements?
Speaker.
Representative Marshall?
Before everybody leaves, please sign the letter for Secretary Holland. I'm not sure, who has the letter?
We haven't printed it yet. We have printed it. Okay, we'll print it and then...
Bring it down.
Yeah, we'll print it, bring it down for everybody to sign down here.
Okay, and I'd just like to say congratulate, to extend my thankfulness to Alicia who took the lead on putting together the letter, and thank you, representatives, for being quick responders. I appreciate it very much. Thank you, Madoff.
Thank you, Representative Marshall.
I know Mr. Vasquez is in the back there. I want to say thank you to you and your department. I know we just passed some legislation for some new equipment, and I know you guys during this pandemic, you guys have been busy, busy, and I'm sure...